We have all board members present, so we establish a forum. Stand to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move to open forum, public input, and I'll see anyone here for that. So we'll move to approve agenda, changes to agenda.
I did under seven, so seven D is declare items disposable surplus. There we have a few list of things that we're still finding that we need to clean up, some textbooks as well as some books out of our, older books out of our book room, still down in the elementary.
They weren't falling apart.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, need a motion to?
Some.
It's okay. Sorry, I misunderstood.
Moved by Leisher and seconded by Schoenfelder to approve the agenda with changes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, no favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carried.
All right, next is conflict of interest, which we have none listed.
I don't.
All right, we'll move to number seven, approve consent agenda. A is approve July minutes, B approve claims, C approve contracts for Troy Kane head boys golf, Jason Weber assistant football, and Aaron Denning junior high volleyball, and then D to declare items disposable surplus for books and fax curriculum. Motion to approve.
Some.
All seconded.
Moved by Pearl, same by Nabel to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, no favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carried.
All right, we'll move to number eight, information discussion staff report, starting with high school principal report.
The Mrs. Kafka was named the South Dakota CTE teacher of the year recently, and so that's a pretty big honor. She'll be now moved on to a regional query, so she's gonna have one of those in Fargo coming up in the spring and possibly the national award, but she's very deserving, and that's a huge honor. So congratulations to her for that. Last week, we really got going. I mean, I've been getting the registration part taken care of, so that's been the big focus. Last week, we had middle school students in on Tuesday and the high school students in on Wednesday. Got everybody in, went through some expectations, and since then, we've been busy fixing schedules. So the hope being is all the craziness that has occurred over the last week and a half will mean that our first three days are pretty smooth, because we worked out a lot of the kinks. So it's been good. It's been, and it's been a good learning experience for me. I feel like I'm gonna walk into day one actually knowing what I'm doing now, so. And so that's, that's been good. So anyways, other than that, working hard on trying to work out the kinks and the scheduling, trying to get the travel times to work out with middle school and high school. So we got a little work to do there, and then get ready for staff in service come Friday, which is coming quick. So we're getting there, been good, but that's all I got for you. Any questions?
How did online registration go? Good?
I think good so far. I mean, it's, it's been really smooth, yeah. It's been nice, and nobody's really complained and said they want the paper back, so I think that's kinda nice to have.
It was really easy.
It's been good for, you know, the idea of now we're not searching for a piece of paper when we, you know, we get these new kiddos in, it's gone really, really well.
Yeah, it was simple. I like, I thought it was really good.
Yeah, I agree. It was nice.
Good, thank you. All right, Adam, for elementary principal AD report.
Okay, yeah, I kinda echo the thoughts there, Mr. Knippling. Just been busy getting everything kinda ready to roll for this Friday when we welcome back staff. We actually have some new staff coming in on Thursday, so we'll get together with them and talk a little bit. But things are kinda coming together, buildings getting put together, the store has been doing a great job. We have our new discovery room is getting put together. Mrs. Maddie along with a couple other teachers on the team have dedicated a lot of time to getting stuff unpacked and organized, and that room's coming together, and really excited about what that's gonna be for us for this coming school year. So that stuff is going really well. As far as you asked about the registration, I was looking at athletically, we've had 134 athletes register for fall athletics, and we're off and running there. Cheer started last week, sideline and competitive, and then football was on Thursday, golf started this week, today, and then we'll have volleyball and cross country kicking off on Thursday. So getting back in the swing of things full fold here, and it's been great to see everybody getting after it and all the kids running around, so yeah, it's been a lot of fun with that. We have our open house event on Thursday night, and that's gonna be from five to seven, so welcoming families in. And anybody that had any issues with registering online, we'll have that open all day on Thursday from 8:00 a.m. until at 7:00 p.m. We're gonna have a couple laptops set up and families can come in and register that way, too. So we'll have that available to the public there for that. So, and then the other thing I wanted to talk about, just kinda wanted to get your guys' perspective, you have a handout here. Been kinda doing some investigating on different things with Pepsi and Coke and kinda what fits our school, and from my perspective, I'm not, I don't really have an opinion one way or another, I just wanna share with the board, I think if we're gonna have and sell Pepsi or Coke, we should maybe just take advantage of some of the incentives that they have to offer. So this Pepsi one, I've talked with Mr. McKinnon and Craig with, it's a five-year proposal that they would be the only distributor here, and with that, we get a $5 rebate on water, Gatorade, the CSD is another kind of like juice type thing, which when they look at our sales numbers, kinda it equates to roughly $1,500 a year, and the Pepsi rep that I talked to said he figured on the low side of those numbers to ensure that it would be, he thinks, that amount. And then they also give us an annual donation, and so you can see those amounts listed there for you, along with Gatorade sideline kit, which, you know, Craig, I think we spent $350 or $400 bucks last year to buy Gatorade for all of our sports teams. And so they would throw that in, along with coolers and water bottles, which were always kinda, they always seem to get misplaced after every sport season. So some pretty good incentives there. And so I just kinda wanted to get your guys' perspective. My only fear with that is the community, would there be, you know, people upset about not having the option of having the Coke products at events? You know, I'm not really, I don't, I don't wanna create a rift or a fight over Pepsi versus Coke or anything like that. To me, it's just if we can take advantage and get some stuff back for what we're doing, then I wanted to present and see what you guys think about that. So that's kinda what they put together for us. It's a five-year deal. With that, they would bring in new kinda clear front machines that would also have like bubbly or La Croix or whatever their sparkling water type thing would be, and they would look newer and be upgraded, I guess, to what we currently have. They talked about doing that for us, and really just working with us on anything that we need if there's, yeah.
You're the Coke component to this.
Sure.
You did what?
Yep, and so I did talk with Coca-Cola as well, I'm sorry, I don't have that on this paper for you, but with Coke, we talked in the spring, and they would do a 10-year deal and pay $10,000 to us upfront, and then it would just be all Coke for that. So a little more cash upfront, but we're also locked in to a 10-year deal with that. So it's kinda, whatever you guys think on those, either way, doesn't really make any difference to me. I just would like to take advantage of whichever, if there's a direction we think we should go, take advantage of some of those incentives that we can get back. And if you don't think it's worth it, I understand that, too. Just wanted to present that and kinda see what you guys, what your thoughts would be on that.
How many, so it's vending with carburetors, is that how it goes? Set amount or just to replace what we have now or?
Kinda whatever we would want, but yeah, you've mentioned to replace what we have, and if we wanted an additional anywhere, they'd be happy to put that in.
How many do we have?
Right now, we got one in the commons area, is our only kinda clear front one that we have, but you talked about even putting one in one of the lounges or work areas as well for the teachers.
What do you mean by clear front?
Um, so you can see, yeah, just, yeah, just that you can see everything in there so you like see it come out of the machine, and I don't know, they're a little bit nicer, can hold more product, they can have a variety of, you know, just get a little more in there, I guess, different varieties of water pop and the bubbly, Gatorade, all that stuff.
So is there people prefer Pepsi products compared to Coke products?
We kinda talked about that back and forth, and I don't know, it just kinda depends. Like, we feel like we have some Pepsi people that really like Mountain Dew and stuff, and then there are a couple teachers that really like Coke, and it's not really, I mean, it's, it's kinda, I don't know, it's kinda split on that.
If you're a diet Coke drinker, you're a diet Coke drinker.
Yeah, and that's kinda the thing, it's like, I don't know if it's, if it really means a lot, if you guys think that would mean a lot to the community to have those options, I understand that.
We tried this proposal, maybe you guys run on the board, but Craig remembers it as.
Very similar to that back then. I mean, that hasn't changed much as far as what they're giving. It doesn't seem like it does a job from what I remember.
I don't know if it's five or 10 years, they went commitments.
Yep.
My past experience with this exclusive, is that's what you're doing, you're excluding ones, you're going exclusive. You know, the dollars on your return are about the same, because, you know, 10 for 10 years, or you're gonna essentially get about five for five in the product and some of the money back to the program concept. But we based the notion on what our kids wanted, and we polled our kids, and our kids were Gatorade drinkers at the time, far beyond Powerade.
I agree, that's kinda what I was choosing still.
Yeah, I would think so, I haven't polled them, but.
And if you're just working in a concession stand, it seems like you pull a lot more Diet Mountain Dew and Coke.
If you were to go through the deals in the concession, I guess, I just remember big orders when they did like for the little beer tournament time at the end of the year there, it was the Pepsi order and then the Coke order.
You know, when you're restocking, you're gonna get three rolls of Mountain Dew and...
And I did ask Ms. Kafka about what her thoughts are from running the concession stand, and she kinda said the same thing. It seems like majority like Pepsi, but there are a couple diehard Coke people that she thought would be disappointing if we didn't have it, because that's what she shared. So I think it's kinda, you know, so.
And this, I mean, the big stuff is one time, like the vending and stuff, but sideline kits and the...
Yeah, that's a yearly.
Coolers is yearly.
Yep.
And signage.
Yep.
Now, this rebate, I have them up here, so this $5 rebate, so you pay for it upfront, you're gonna pay your regular price, and then they give it to us in a check back at the end?
Yes.
Is that how it works? Okay.
Yep, because it could go up if you end up selling more.
Yes, yep.
It could be more than that, or it could go down as well.
Yep.
So you're not guaranteed that $1,500.
No.
So Mr. M saying $1,000, I mean, that's probably even safer than, you know, the $1,500.
But then you got all these other...
Right, the other bonuses.
Plus, they break this $10,000 down over 10 years, I mean, $1,000 a year, so.
Right, right. Yeah, to me, the 10 years, I just, 10 years is a long time, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we're five years, if we didn't like it, well, five years we can get through it and go back to what it was, but, and the Pepsi guy was just easy to talk to and said, basically, you know, we might not give a lot of upfront money, but if you guys need something along the way, if it's teacher appreciation, if it's, you know, a school dance and you want drinks donated, we'll bring them down. So at least that's, you know, he sounded like he'd be good to work with in my conversations with him, but.
Okay.
So.
Anybody have thoughts, or you want any answer tonight, I imagine, Adam?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Preferably if we could.
We go with the Pepsi, since it's five year, about the same amount of money, Gatorade.
The big thing to me is the kids.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna have more, parents complaining that there's not Coke compared to kids, I think kids are gonna drink whatever we have, I think. I'd buy a Pepsi.
Just so you guys know, the one in, the one machine in the kitchen area or the cafeteria area, there's no soft drinks, no pop in that, there can't be.
Can't be.
And it can only be certain, I mean, regular Gatorade can't even be in that machine because there's too much.
Drinks.
Just so you know, that one, that's the machine you were talking about, one in the cafeteria, that's not a, it'll be a new machine possibly, but it's limited on what you can put in that machine, because it's, unless you put a timer on it, which you could put a timer on it where it wouldn't be available during the school day, then you can have whatever you want in there for after hours. But since it's there, we've always just put what's, what fits the school lunch programs, guidelines for that, so.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that.
Okay, so we're good with Pepsi? I disagree. Scott? Yeah, okay. Matt? Good, okay.
Okay.
Go Pepsi.
Thank you, that's all I had, guys.
Do you wanna do a motion on that?
Sure. I have one question, what's the discovery room? What is it gonna be used for?
Um, it is gonna be like a sensory room, so it's gonna be for kids that need a break throughout their day, like maybe they're...
They just renamed it.
Oh, okay.
What's that? What'd he say?
They just renamed it to something else?
Yeah.
Is that the one they were painting in?
Yep.
Oh, cool, okay.
So we use discovery rather than sensory, just because there are multiple ways that you can use the room. And so we also wanna give classes the opportunity of, maybe it's a reward to take their kids down there, but it has all of our sensory type tools, if you will, for, you know, kids that need that reset, come down, like there, we have lights on the wall that they can touch and light up, we have different little light boards set up, some comfy seating, you know, building with Legos and different things, kinetic sand, all sorts of things like that, so.
It's a byproduct of our ARC plan.
Yep.
And it was social, emotional, it's our wellness room.
Yep.
So the dollars, the stamp that came out of ARC dollars to do that, so, and that was the old computer lab, and that's been transformed into what they are labeling the discovery, and it's probably more appropriate word.
Cool, okay, thank you.
Turned my guess.
Okay.
Okay, so if I can get a motion for that, exclusive, to approve the exclusive contract with Pepsi for five years.
Some.
Move by Nabel, seconded by Schoenfelder, any other discussion? Hearing none, no favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carried.
All right, Mr. McKinnon.
We should be wrapping up lighting project here, hopefully by the end of the week, if not the first couple days of next week, so there might be little odds and ends, but closets here and there, stuff like that where they really haven't gotten into, but I think that's going well. I just wanted to commend, put on the record that the maintenance staff has done an awesome job this summer, and they've worked really hard, if you think about some of the things that we did here from a transformation perspective. I threw a lot of curveballs at them, and for the most part, they've handled it pretty well, and we really squared away here when the time school starts, so. The district auction sale, I just received that information today, so a little update on that. We had a check that was cut to us for a profit of $16,760, Craig, if I remember right, the check I gave you? Sixteen, seven, sixty?
Sixteen, seven, something.
Yeah, sixteen, seven, so that was pocket, and that's all the expenses coming out of there for that. So I think that was fruitful, even though there's a couple items on there, that was the majority of it, twofold, you still got a lot rid of a lot of things that had been around here for a long time and still made a little bit of cash on some of the other products, so. The Armory Roof is in the process right now. I met with them last Tuesday, we were looking at end of August and first of September. They left two hours later, I got a phone call and said, hey, can we come tomorrow? We had a job fall through, and I'm like, oh, yeah, sure, no problem. So you don't look contractors, that happens rare in the contractor's world, so the fact that we got to be a benefactor of that was really pretty cool, so I suspect by next week, Wednesday, that those guys will have that Armory Roof project wrapped up. Might be a little things here and there. I know the steel that they're gonna put across the top, they may not have that all in at this time, but, or that time, next Wednesday, but, so that was a good thing. Joint conference I went to was really pretty good, a lot of content and information there that went to some things on continuous school improvement. Hopefully in the future, be spending some time on the notion of what continuous school improvement is and how it may apply to us as a school district. Our main speaker was a gal by the name of Ruby Payne, she's a very well-known author and speaker. She did a lot of conversation on poverty and all that's impacting, and then what we're yet to see in on poverty, as well as the socially-emotional component of COVID and the ramifications of COVID, so. As a really enjoyable conference, I did spend one session on, with school attorneys, that was highly interesting. Hopefully it's things like topics that you never want to approach as a school board or have to deal with as a school board, but got a lot of information there on a couple different topics, so feel a little bit more prepared if something like that ever happens and you're not gonna speak to them, because I don't wanna jinx, I don't wanna jinx you guys, so we'll leave that at that, so. As the two principals did, we have in-service starting on Friday, all the staff's coming in, I got pairs and teachers coming in on Friday, and then Monday, we'll turn around and have everybody come in. And then Mr. Knippling and Mr. Fisher and I met this summer, and we actually have our professional development days and our early release days, what's happening on those days, we have that all planned out, and there are gonna be a combination of bringing in some outside vendors or resources to help us with that, but we'll also take responsibility between the three of us two to get in front of our staff and talk about some topics that we've identified that they need some support on and some extended learning. So we feel pretty good about those experiences on our school calendar, and it's, I guess the encouragement there, it's not dilly-willy, it's not at random, it's intentional, it's thoughtful, and it will be, it will be relevant, so. We're gonna, you guys entrusted us to change the school calendar, we appreciate that, I appreciate that, to get in front of people, our staff, and we're not just gonna, we don't take that opportunity lightly, so teachers are gonna be learning, so. If there's any questions on that part of it, the last component that I have there, I put in your board packet, is just some consideration or some conversation, Craig and myself and eh, probably more Craig and myself than anybody, but there is a notion about national conference attendance from administrator's perspective. You know, it's not, it's not a common practice, I think, in a lot of schools, especially the smaller schools, just because of the potential cost factor that's associated with attending those events. Having been in the game as long as I have, I know I've always followed those well, not always, I've been to three national conferences in 30 years, so if that tells you anything. But they've all been very fruitful, all very worthwhile, it's kinda the notion of what you put into it is what you get out of it. I think there's value in having your principals and admin attend those types of events, because you can come back with some really informed information or informed processes and informed ideas, you know, when they go out and see what's happening in, outside of our bubble in South Dakota, you get exposed to a lot of different things, and some of them are a fit for, for South Dakota and communities our size, or school communities our size, some of them are. But I have never left one of those events without bringing something back to the staff that I've worked with, so I guess we're asking you for some consideration, and this is only just planting the seed right now, let it marinate, there's no decisions to be made, but, because it's not a line item that we had put in the budget for this year, but some point in time for us to circle back, you know, probably in the spring of the year, to say, hey, what do you think about your principals on a four-year cycle? So it'd be me one year, Mr. Knippling one year, the next year, Mr. Fisher, and the next year, Mr. Rooney, attending their national level conferences to where it is, and essentially what goes along with that is your conference registration, your potential airfare, and then your room and board. They're not local, I mean, you're going to places, and I guess that's probably part of the rub. I mean, you're going to, I've been to one in San Diego, I've been to one in Palm Springs, California, and I've been one to Phoenix, Arizona, so. And they're typically during a school year type of an event, and you're gone, you miss maybe two or three days, so, because usually it goes over a weekend as well, so. Comments, questions about the notion of professional development? Because if we don't stay up on current practices, you know, we always go, we can always go back to school, which I encourage admin to do, but it's not like there's a plethora of things right here at home that we can send administrators to, like we can our teachers, so, just something for you guys to consider.
Is there more?
We did, we did have a way to come up with some of the funds to help.
Yeah, you explained that better than I can, so.
Well, when, in the past, we've always done the dues, as far as the SASD dues, I mean, you have your local, and then you have your state one, and then you have national one as well, and we've always just paid the dues because it's what everybody filled out. Well, we don't really get anything out of the national dues on a yearly basis, other than maybe a newsletter, but maybe the only time is you wouldn't pay for all four of those national dues each year, you just pay for the one that's going. So that would save you almost $1,000, I think, or maybe even a little over, because it's all based on, you know, the superintendent's one's a little more expensive than mine, and the principal's secondary is more expensive than the elementary and all that stuff. So there's a way to come up with some of the money, we thought maybe, help a little bit.
If you belong to the national organization, the registration fee for the conferences is considerably reduced, so if you can still go, you're gonna pay...
Higher registration costs.
Registration costs at that time, so. It's not that it's gonna recoup all of those dollars, but it is, I'll be honest with you, it can be anywhere from a three to a $5,000 line in any one given year, so. But you don't have to go if they don't fill it, there's something in the conference that wasn't fruitful or worthy, certainly, and then it just, they forfeit that opportunity until another three years down the road, so. We just wanted to bring it to your attention, only to plant the seed, so.
Is there more than one opportunity a year?
No.
Just once a year?
Yep, one time a year.
So if I understand correctly, they have different conferences for a business manager?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it isn't just a...
It's very specific to each year.
It's very intentional.
Well, yeah, when I went, it was just business managers from all over, Australia included.
Wow, very cool.
When we were in Phoenix. And I went as a scholarship through the first five years of a business manager, you'd apply for a scholarship, and I got that scholarship and went. Was the one time I did go, yeah. That was the only time, so.
But it's AASA, American Association, Superintendent's Association, National Association Secondary School Principals, National Association Elementary School Principals, Business Managers, so they each have their own parent national conference throughout the course of a calendar year.
So they might, his might be in a different place than yours?
Yeah.
It's not like they're all at the same time in one place, oh, okay.
They're at different times throughout the year.
Yeah. Anyway, thanks for at least entertaining.
Adam could double dip as elementary principal and activity director.
One or the other.
I don't know, do they have a national athletic director?
Yes, they do, absolutely. They do, but you can only go to one or the other.
We don't pay national dues for that one, so.
Good question. Okay, sounds good, so you'll bring that back when it comes?
Yeah, back in the spring of the year, we wanted to plant the seed, no, so it's not the first time you heard of it.
And we can build it into our budget?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, sounds good. All right, perfect, thank you. All right, we will move to number nine, discussion items. A is building committee update, the school board will be presented with an update on the proposed multi-use facility addition.
Okay. Bear with me here. Okay, look on the screen up here, so we met again on last Tuesday, we went with Architecture Inc. Incorporated, and we've been construction, excuse me, Craig was in attendance, I was in attendance, Mr. Knippling, Mr. Fisher, Matt and Scott were part of that conversation, they had a few other support people there in those organizations as well. It's the second time that we've met with ARC Inc. in the development phase of what potentially a building addition could look like, location, some of the components that are, one would like to see embedded in that facility, so this is a rendition, it's come from ARC Inc., obviously, I'll try to blow this up for you guys so you can see on the screen here, so bear with me a little bit, so you can play with this just a little bit. Okay, and then I'll slide this down, but as you can see, that's a physical footprint of your current facility, so everything that's in color is a rendition of the new space, a new, the building addition that we, you guys are having a conversation about, so there's a little bit, couple better pictures here, but you can just kinda see the overall Google Earth kinda notion of that. Obviously, the color doesn't exist right now, that's the current existing high school parking lot, but that's the premise. existing high school parking lot. But that's the premise as to where it would be located. Anybody want to expand on the physical, what you see there, or ask questions, the three board numbers that you're seeing in there? This isn't a great rendition. I'll show you a little bit, a couple of pictures here, what's a little bit better, if maybe that would help. So, okay? Okay, now, bear with me again, because I'm going to have to reduce this just a little bit, or at least move it over. So there you can kind of shrink this just a little bit. So that's a little bit better job of what has transpired. Very adamant in our conversation, I was, to at least the architects, I don't like the terminology of what you see in the middle of the orange part, because I think that can steer people the wrong way. Because while it looks like that, and I'm sure it has every facet of that, it's not what we want to sell it as, because it's multi-use. It's not that. It can be used for lots of different things. So multi-use is just a better term, in my opinion. Fitness to the north, wrestling, those are your two opportunities for really facilities needs. Our wrestling room is really inadequate, as well as our weight lift space, strength and conditioning space, just really not adequate at all.
For size reference, the wrestling room is big enough for two mats plus walking area on the outside.
Just the one side.
One side.
Down the one side, you have six footed.
Yeah. What it has too is full, two full competition mats in it.
Yep.
And right now, you can't get one in your current space.
So there's no showers or anything else?
No.
Restrooms, I see.
Exactly.
But we did talk about putting a shower in the restroom possibly, especially up by the fitness area.
Yeah.
But no locker rooms per se, John, if that's what you're getting at.
And part of that is, it's a great question, because we still have, if I, you know, down and below here, if you follow the hallway, here, come down the hallway, we're right out here. You have your locker rooms that are there, that are accessible for the kids. And plus, there's still restroom facilities down there. And if you walk around within the current existing, these are restrooms as well that are in the commons area. So there won't be the necessity, we feel, at this stage of the game, for another whole set of locker room space.
Arc Inc. and Pitts both agreed that because of the locker rooms, this was the best spot to put it. They didn't like the standalone or the east side of the building because of where locker rooms were in the plumbing, and this would be the most economical.
And John, we did talk about the current weight room as being a possibility of a couple changing spaces. Maybe not locker rooms per se, where they could shower, but maybe the junior high teams can, or teams that participate in the NPR could go change, kind of like the old nurses room used to be.
Essentially put a training room in the middle of that space right there. So you'd have a changing room on either side of that, and then your training room, ice machine,
In the middle. Referee place, wasn't that in?
Which one?
The referee.
Yeah.
It could be those changing spaces.
Could be a changing space in there for them too. Let's, I'll throw it out here, full disclosure. We also talked about whirlpool space in there. We also talked about sauna space in there, from a recovery perspective. So, I mean, those are some suggestions that came from the public, not us, so.
So the office space up on the top, is that like for someone that works here to have an office there?
Yeah. Now, you're looking at more of your health PE concept or coaching concept, where there's just some, some space to.
Sit and do stuff? Okay. I was just curious.
As our current HVAC, we'll handle this extra.
So anything new that's embedded within that? That's a great question. I don't know that that's really been answered. I can see a lot of those units, especially on the AC component side of it, because we're adding AC to what you currently have. Probably standalone, now tapping into the boiler system, the fact that those are two brand-new boilers down at that end, I suspect it probably has capacity for growth in there. But it's a great question that we can certainly ask when we meet with them. So, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see anywhere in there that's mechanical, and they have the notion of adding a mechanical room and adding new boilers to that component of it either to service that. But it's a great question, Mr. Crowe. We'll have to make sure. Craig, can you make note of that?
Yep.
So we do ask that question for me, please?
So the gymnasium word up there?
Multi-use, Mr. Crowe.
Okay. The, the size of that, is, is that a regular-sized court?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Fifty by eighty-four, yes.
Yes, it was.
They can be fifty by eighty-four. That's probably the same size as the NPR now. The NPR is a little smaller than the ARM, the ARM is a little bigger.
Okay. But it is regulation size. So, and one of the components there, we talked on Tuesday about this way too, having it, side going this way too, if necessity, if that's something that we wanted to do. I don't think we really had, we didn't feel the necessity for that was there. Baskets, yes, but not the necessity to have to play any kind of competition there. The biggest thing about this facility, the multi-use approach to that, while all that stuff will be, the ability to play some basketball within that volleyball as well, and the courts that you see drawn on there, is the flooring. This is not wood. This is a multi-use floor. We can go in there and throw shot put. We can go in there and practice golf. We can go in there and play softball and baseball.
That was my next question.
Swing a club. And you're not doing that on a wood floor. So that's what the surface, it's not necessarily letting itself to be a competition gym because of the surface that's going to be embedded in there. We want to run track in there as well.
So this are going to be a track?
There is. It's coming. They just didn't have
In the multi-.
Absolutely, multi-use.
And maybe even, you know, we've talked about batting nets, cages.
Cages coming down from the ceiling.
Coming down from the ceiling for, for that growth there, there's a possibility to.
We will have a pit in the floor, somewhere in there. You can kind of see where it sits here right now. But we talked about maybe change in that, a different direction, but
Redondo?
Yep. That pit will be covered, the surface on it.
The drum block jump, triple jump.
Yep. Cross-court, that diagonal is potentially setting an opportunity for pole wall, to go across court. And an indoor aspect of that, so.
And this is the drawing before the last meeting we had?
This was.
So they had
Well, they did do the, they did some, this is what Colby sent me after our conversation.
Can't see the width, but they had talked about widening it just a few feet.
Watch, watch the track.
North, south.
Yep.
To accommodate the walking track a little bit more, because the way it was prior, it would pretty much be a ninety-degree bend. It will be still pretty tight. It'll still be a more of a radius.
A radius, that was the word they used. It'll have a, it'll have the appearance of there's a track component.
And it was only, it wasn't very wide, was it?
Too many, yeah.
Too many.
More, six feet, something like that.
Walking track, whatever you, can use some straightaway stuff in there too for practicing blocks and things like that. So. Fitness center at the top, fitness center, fitness center. I mean, it is what it is. I mean, you organize your space in there with, whether it's cardiovascular, it's mostly free weights, and what we got is free. I suspect at some point in time that could put some wireless equipment in there, where it's a little bit more machine-operated, but within time. And we were pretty adamant, and they as well as ours, as we've discovered this year, you can never have enough storage. So you'll see several different particular places down there where storage is a component of it. The very bottom storage, that would actually buffer between the wrestling and the NPR room. You could enter that space from either of those facilities, so.
So did they, on the fitness up there, did they actually, basically, in essence, put the machines and?
You will see.
I mean, okay, I'm just seeing.
It's just space. It's just size right now. We haven't talked anything about where each thing goes inside there.
No, that's eventually coming.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
One thing I'd like to add, you know, that space, storage space down at the bottom, Mr.?
Yep.
Possibility of getting some portable bleachers to bring in, to use both in
Both spaces.
The new multipurpose space and maybe putting up on the sides then. If they're portable, you can roll them into the current multipurpose room and have some seating on the sides during our JV and junior high events that everybody complains about now.
Rather than sitting in a chair. Because you could buy three-row aluminum that flip up.
And they just roll on wheels for easy.
That wide.
And there's room for that right now.
Yeah.
You mean in our NPR?
In the proposal.
In this one, yeah.
The storage space is what we're kind of, that's the point.
Yeah.
But if, if they're used in the new space, they would sit on the track.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if you did permanent, you're taking away space then, or adding space, one or the other, whichever way you want to look at it.
So did you guys talk about what you'd build this with? Are you going to do steel? Can you try and match some?
I'll show you.
That's coming up.
Yep. Anyway, that's a great question. One thing we should point out too is that the high school office and the relocation of the high school office. So what you see there is that east entrance. This right here, this green sped right here, that's the current space for office, or where it is currently. And then right here is your kitchen. That's right outside the door. Here is our garbage. So we didn't think that that was a great space. This is the current Trojan, Trojan Den. The space is not adequate enough. We felt that after looking at it. Mr. Knippling is pretty adamant that need more space. So we thought the more relevant space, so this, we'd have a ramp, handicap accessible in order to get in here. This would be a vestibule right here where they come in. They should literally have to come through here to get back out. Will be double doors there too, but can buzz in, buzz out, and then office peg out here, and then ISS within that space as well. So, current teacher that's in there, we would just move over to this space right here, because it's available at this point in time.
Yeah. I really like this, this office setup, actually having to walk through the office. And whether we go through with this or not, I think it's something we should consider for this end of the building. Because if they're buzzing over on the east side, they necessarily don't need to stop in the office. They can just.
They don't.
They don't even when you buzz down the, this side of the office.
I come through the door, I just go. So we thought that was, it was located when they originally, in that Trojan Den. That's where it says server to the right of that, but we relocated it. And a much better utilization of space and accessibility to public as well, parents and kids, just makes much more sense to put it there. I wasn't fond of it, running outside the door where the garbage, where you'd have to walk in and the garbage sits. And you can relocate that, so.
So how does that fit with the street out here?
This? So aesthetically, what that would look like is pretty close to what you're seeing there. So everything, let's have a laugh, wrestling, multi-use, fitness, and then the hallways and stuff that are embedded with that current NPR. And also, that's kind of the location. There's your driveway as it currently exists, and new space to learn.
So we're not thinking about a flat roof, are we?
Yes, it will be.
Oh, man!
If you listen to what, how that has come evolved, because I would agree with you. But that, the, the technology behind that, in a ballast roof, in fact, they would say that schools that they're building now, a majority of them are going back.
We haven't gotten that far yet. I've built, I, I, I know.
Supposedly it's slow.
A long time to me for the moment.
I understand. I, I, I'm on the same page.
All right. But I don't know how else you can make all the connections and tie it in.
I got you.
Without
Going up?
Yeah. I mean, really, from a price perspective. But I'm spitballing on that, so certainly they will come, Steve will come, Colby will come, and have some of those deeper conversations about that. So, but that's one, one, one perspective on it.
And just the initial explanation they gave me on that was, it's, it's a flat roof, but it has a pitch on it, so there's no rock. So it has a slope. The water gets off and it doesn't sit up there. And the water, with the rock, they said, tends to slow down in puddle. So.
And obviously it's a road, it's EPDM, but you know, like I said, you're just putting one back on that erd, and that's been about burned off in twenty-five years. But anyway, you asked a question of what it's being built by.
And so is the white, are those windows?
It's white, it's not windows.
It's pre-cast.
Pre-cast.
So the, a greater portion of the facility is, it's being proposed to be pre-cast. But they could do a lot of different things with pre-cast.
Yeah, the, the outside of it, they can make it, there you go.
Yeah. So there's a little bit better rendition of that. Now, the fitness center, those are all windows. I think when we get to that point, I think we can find a happy medium compromise with finding some space, not space, some vision, some aesthetic. When you're inside looking, or you're working out type of deal, that you can have access to the outside of that. We don't, I don't think we need that many windows, but it looks cool. But I think the price point on that is going to be, it'll dictate to us as to how many windows we can actually probably put in there. So, and then it's, it's a, you know, shoe for the moon, right? And then it's got your way back. But the overhang on the top of that premise.
It's kind of for shade, right?
Yep, yep. Right here, it looked pretty, I mean, it actually looked really pretty nice. This is, like I said, all pre-cast. They could do some stuff with that pre-cast. It's not actually weights-coded, but they can differentiate it and make it look really pretty cool and that. So I think the notion on that was, it was taking what you have. You had two architects sitting here, and basically they said, you've got a great facility, and it's, it's nice, and it's, I mean, it just, it's perfect where it is, but it's really brown. There's a lot of brown in what you have. So this kind of concept is going to differentiate, make it stand out, get a little bit of a, a different tone, a different texture, a different look to what you currently have, while at the same time ties in, I think, nicely, makes it stand out a little bit as well. So that was, I mean, that was just one of the things that they had referenced. And that's, that's the north. They didn't have a great rendition, this is all they got. But over here, this would be an entrance over here. And then we did talk, which they didn't put in there, but there's, essentially what we're looking at is a courtyard in between the two facilities. Instead of utilize, we're going to utilize that, that's dead space that's in between there, where those offices are at right now. There was dead space between there. I don't remember, somebody managed, got me the suggestion to kind of utilize that space for like a courtyard approach. So putting up some picnic tables out there, stuff in the fall, so your kids can go out there and eat lunch if they needed to or wanted to. Or senior, we don't have anything from a senior lounge perspective, a senior privileges, but we would study all components. Outdoor classroom as well, so.
Do you need, do you need any doors on the west side for, not normally for public use, but if there would be a tornado or anything?
Just like the NPR has now?
Yep. I'm just asking.
That's a good question. And I never said anything, but that's.
Yeah. I mean, whatever they're doing by code, I mean, I'm sure it'll be access from a code perspective. So, a little bit different. I'll plug that down too, over there. Again, you see two windows at the top of that, multi-use facility. That's maybe, it'd be nice, it's a natural lighting in there. But again, we'll talk about from an expense perspective, if that's absolutely a necessity or not. But I think, I think it looks nice. So that's your kind of first view there of potentially the design of the physical space on the outside, aesthetically, where it fits.
So the high school office will be where the parking lot is now, right there?
The, the high school office won't come
On the east side.
The east projection.
Can you, can you point to it? Yeah.
It'll sit right there inside that door. And the entrance in the fitness center is your access to public. So that public can get in and not over there. Essentially, it's in the process, well, we just started here with a key fob. You know, so if somebody wanted to come in there and utilize that space, they certainly could. There is this space, space with this connection to this, multi-use to this would be an open-air approach. A cage type of setting to differentiate the two spaces. It'd be like, help me guys, I don't want to say it's not a chain link fence, but you would be able to see into the fitness center, see out.
Like netting or something?
You know, like a shopping mall where they close.
The doors, we talked about outdoors being the shopping mall doors. You have where you pull them down and you can, air can go up through and you can see through them, but they can't get through.
Or having something at the bottom where, you know, 10 feet, so if there's something going on in the multi-use area, it blocks from the fitness center.
You guys feel that parking lot is big enough?
Oh, yeah.
It's bigger than what we have now, probably. No, I'm, yeah.
It'll be adequate. I mean, it'll make sure that it's adequate as far as the car spaces and stuff there were allotted. So that's really going to be the parking lot for whoever's using the weight room, not the other part. Makes a little more sense now that you can see it. As you saw it on the outside, I guess there's this space right here is where we're talking about that courtyard concept. Probably add a door right here. We talked about that, the kids can come out in here and use this space in here.
From a security standpoint on that courtyard there, we could add a fence on the north corner right off that door there.
Right here.
We just wanted to make sure that everybody was secure if that's a concern. Public is coming in and out that door during school.
And we talked about. Turned wood for grass or anything like that, but I think we, just another maintenance component to it that would be rough, maybe just put it all in the cement. Otherwise you have to maintain it.
So the ideas are in the multi-purpose room to have some junior high games or?
Probably not actual junior high games per se, because those are still in the MPR, especially if we got some portable bleachers to add to that. What that could be used for game-wise would be maybe a tournament. You can make your tournament, your little kids' tournaments, your, a junior high tournament could be bigger, you could have more teams here. Because you could use that court for that possibly. But as far as the junior high games and all, that would start, that would still probably be played in the current MPR because of the wood floor.
Well, not volleyball. I'm just thinking where we start early in the afternoon now, go, can you?
Well, what we thought we could use this, this, maybe the PE could be in this one instead of the MPR then. Because then it would save on the wood floor currently as well, because that one gets pretty beat up throughout the year with not, because every kid in PE has street shoes in there. They don't have a second pair of tennis shoes that they bring along like some schools require.
We don't, we don't have a requirement that they have to bring PE shoes to school, so they're wearing street shoes in there. It's got this, that, and the other, under rocks. Has a tendency, has a, it's tough on your finish for sure.
Sure.
But as Jill would probably advocate, and she did, I think, last time too, that they play volleyball in anything right now.
Yeah.
So could you, absolutely, you could. And all that would be set up for that. I mean, it'll have ports on the floor in order to play volleyball.
Another big thing too, this gym will make it so that middle school should not have to go in the mornings.
Oh, yes.
It gets rid of morning practices, which, you know, like for me, if we're going to have volleyball and then basketball, we've got a semester of six or 15 practices ahead of us. Sure, the parents will appreciate that.
Matt brought up a good topic that we need to vet with Art Inc. as well, but we're wondering if there is a necessity for this current wall that exists here to maybe like, again, an open-air approach if we put like a header in there or something like that and open that up a little bit so it's free flow. Because right now you then there's a wall there. It just seems more to be a better flow, because now you're coming from one hallway into another hallway to come down.
Could you just make better?
Flow, it's a flow.
Better flow and a better, more room for an entrance and a place for people to congregate. You might have to have some pillars in there, kind of like some of the armory, lunchroom, better now.
And then there, what he sent me, I don't have what, sorry, I don't have the rest of this image. This image goes south here and that's where you would see that current rest, or current weight room that turns into a training space and things of that nature.
Very good. Anybody else have questions?
We, they, the conversation moving forward, the necessity to meet again, help me gaze, lose the train of thought, what we, with the rationale, what we decided at that point in time.
Well, Pitts was going to come, try to come up with some.
Oh, the numbers. That's ultimately the million dollar.
Because they needed to know what the structure was made out of and that kind of stuff first.
Art Inc. was going to do a better job of defining everything in there, Mr. Pearl, like you suggested. And they're going to work with Pitts. Pitts can start looking at some, some bit components of that. Right now, what maybe what some of those things would cost, but I will caution you because they're not technically in the midst of that process. I mean, it's going to be a range and it's not going to, I'm guessing it's going to be a range. It's not going to be a range in that. But it's going to give us an idea to start from a price point perspective as to where we're at with it. And a lot of it will be the physical structure in of itself. The precast, the roof, the mirrors, the, you know, the rest, you know, the walls are precast. There'll be the wall in the fitness center, I mean, the windows that are embedded in it, that's where you're going to get a lot of your cost and your, the plumbing that's associated with it. HVAC too, so when we ask that portion.
So do you have another meeting set up already?
Not until.
They come back and say they're done?
They get back with the numbers. So I don't, I'm hoping that in the September meeting, we'll, we'll have some ideas to what Pitts and, I mean, I visit with Jim regularly on that, Mr. Webber, so he'll keep me in touch with that as well as Steve. Anyway.
Okay.
Questions about that?
All right, we will move to the next discussion item B, district safety, emergency plan. The school board will review proposed strategies and procedures for all emergency drills.
So I put that in your packet. We don't know what kind of questions you have about what you see there. I believe there was one page missing, my apologies, it's the last page. And it really talked about just like a potential student, student issue. Because I have every component associated from a crisis or an emergency perspective associated. When I went and tried to find documents like this, they didn't exist. I believe it was more of kind of a, okay, let's do this. There was nothing in writing that I could find that guided the process.
You mean here?
Mm-hmm, here. I would suggest something like this. We laminate all this stuff, it hangs in a room, it's on a hook by every door. So it's accessible and people know how to use it and get the staff up to date on that. So again, this is, I think Jill, you asked the question back in May in light of what happened in Texas right before we got out of school. So did some work on that over the summer and really found nothing to guide the process other than this is kind of what we do. Well, this is a product, honestly, it was a creation several years ago on my own part for the facility in which I came from. I went through and looked at it, looked what we did here, or looked at how the physical footprint would work here and that we could replicate a lot of the same things here. So you can see all the different types of drills that are in there. The one thing that I do know that has happened here is the Alice training. And the guy that does that, state trooper, is helping me over there, but also kind of a personal friend of mine. I know that they've had some exposure to Alice, Craig, if you can kind of wrap your head around that a little bit. But something that if we had to bring him back at some point in time, I think people know enough about it. It's the staff, any ways that we could abide by this. And then if we brought it back, an opportunity to have him come revisit this component. But I think this is something that we sit down with the staff on that we could implement pretty easily, quite honestly. The only wild card that they do not have answered right now is where is the rallying point? You have to have a rally point. If we go into a true evacuation concept for, let's say, an active shooter situation, you don't hunker, you get out. You get permission to kids, you teach them any orifice, any doorway, any window, whatever you need to do, you run. But there has to be a point, a rallying point. People say, well, good as that, do, then they go to the rally point. I'm like, I sit here and debate all day long with people on this concept. Bottom line is you put that there for a recovery perspective and that's where people have to be. If kids get out in a situation, they know where they go to. We teach them where that is, we show them where that is. When it's get out, they know where they need to go if they're on their own accord. You'd be shocked when you work with PK kids, kindergarten kids, people say, you can't do that. They will never get there. Trust me, they can't. If you teach them, they will, because I've watched it and I've done it. So, but I don't know where that rallying point's at. So I need to make some phone calls, try to keep it somewhat in proximity, but away from here as well. So there is the Northwestern building. I'm going to read it out to Terry Meyer about. I don't know that there's what's in that facility at this stage of the game, but that was suggested to me. That maybe ask him if they're willing to, you know, if something in the event like that, people suggested the fire station. I'm like, well, not if this is going on, because guess who's coming? They're coming and things are going to be rolling, right? So that's probably not the best opportunity for them coming, kids coming, I mean, you kind of see some of that, you know, in and out on that probably may not be the best. But with that other facility set, I mean, they're just pretty close, so. But if you read through it, questions on it?
Just that you'll do drills with the, with the kids and the teachers?
Absolutely. The intention is to reacquaint the staff with the notion of emergency drills. You know, the other components of it, we practice that stuff, but again, it's not in writing intentional. We have our severe weather drill, we have our fire drills and things like this, but this is kind of the entire package. And there is a time to lockdown. There is a time to put kids in a situation where, okay, nobody goes anywhere. You know, and that's a whole different scenario than an active shooter situation. So, and we practice that stuff. But exposing the teachers to this concept, that's something that we could do here. It's on my list to get them information. We talk about it, put this stuff in their hands, they read through it and be intentional while planning sometimes with Mr. Fisher, Mr. Knipley. In the fall of the year, go and do it when it's nice outside, you know, people say, well, never plan for an emergency. I get it, but if we're going to teach our kids where it's at, walk them there and then give them the opportunity. Literally you say, okay, now go. They look at you like, you mean run? Yeah, just go. Go where you're going, just go, get there. Kind of turns into a little bit of a game, it's a lot of fun and, but you gotta coach them, nobody's pushing, nobody's shoving, find your own route there. It's not giggles and tackling each other. I mean, you really got to work with, especially the little kids on that and, you know. But you prep them on the front side too with the rationale why we're doing it. You don't lie to them. There's bad people in this world. Something like that happens and then you got to go, so. Questions?
First reading, right? Or is this just discussion?
Uh, it's a procedure. I don't know, that's actually a policy, Craig. It says more procedural as to how we operate in our school setting.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, we will move to C, school board development. The school board will be presented information on the topic of school board activities that can help the board better understand board responsibilities and oversight.
I put this in your packet, if you had a chance to look at it, you'll, this called GAVL and every seat seats an acronym that actually stands for a concept that school boards abide by or should be familiar with, governance, academy of visionary educational leadership. So I'm just throwing it out there to you guys. We, Jed, you're year two, Scott, you're year one, Matt, you're three, right? So, Mr. Pearl, I'm not going to say how many years you've been here. You've been here long enough, but collectively, it's been my experience, it's sitting in the chair. When you have such turnover like that and you have a lot of faces to that, you take a night and you bring in outside resources. You have somebody come in and talk to a specific component, program perspective as a school. It helps bring continuity, it helps build some team, some leadership. You know, and helps you guys maybe talk about some vision and perspective. There's a couple of different components about GAVL. I throw it out there as the notion, it wouldn't be on a school board night, it's going to be a separate meeting. If we come in and we put on the calendar, you know, probably like a six to eight or six to nine kind of concept. You know, if we could order in, I mean, you can make a supper out of it if you wanted to. Associate school board is your parent organization, so we could bring a guy like Jim Holt back in and he could help guide that process. So I'm just gauging what your greatest interest in doing this is. Education on your part as a school board, you make some idea? I don't have anything specific, but it could be.
Yeah, I've taken a couple of their online classes last year and they were very informative, so I'd be open to it.
Okay. I mean, if there's some general consensus that we can find something in the future here and hone in on it, that we can bring somebody in.
Yeah.
And I talked to Mr. Webber at the convention on Thursday. So he said, yeah, I wonder, he just gave me a call and he did tell me, he says, September and most of October is already booked, so.
Is this part of our membership or is this something we pay for?
It'd be above and beyond.
Just curious.
It'll be reasonable, but. Good question.
Thank you. All right, so you'll come back to us with possible dates?
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, we will move on to discussion item D, 15 passenger van. The school board will discuss the purchase of a 15 passenger van to use for events where numbers do not dictate the necessity of a full-size plus.
Craig's been working on this more than I have, so he has a little more information I do, but what, rather would I put in your notes there if you had questions on that? So.
So we do not have it in the budget. That's why we need to discuss and talk about. We do have X amount of dollars, but not enough for one of these. And the budget line item was $30,000 for a new vehicle. But with proceeds from the sale of the other vehicle and also we had a hail damage, check from the hail insurance for those. We can use that, some of those proceeds to make up the difference and just use it as cash on hand when you do the budget line item, when you do a supplemental budget. Did you tell them the price and all that stuff for the one we found? Okay, so yeah, we, these things are not easy to come by. I actually talked to JR over a year ago about this. And he says, well, good luck finding one, because I've been looking for nine months for DW at that time. And I saw some on the internet and I showed Pat. They were over billions and I'm like, oh, there's a couple, but they were a little, and then so I thought I'd give JR. He goes, well, actually, he goes, I have a couple that'll be coming available beginning first part of August. We have not taken a look at them at all. But he does have two that he has his hands on that are going to be available. And it's, the price was 45,995 and it had 49,000 miles on it, which is both cheaper and less miles than the two I saw at Billion over in Sioux Falls. It's a 2019. What I don't know is there's different height levels of them. So I don't know if this is a mid roof or a tall roof or what. He did not tell me any of those specifics. I mean, there's different, those things come into play of how much I'm guessing they're worth. I did check with the insurance. It would be about $1,200 for the year, a little bit more than a regular van. I think our regular vans are at about 800, 700 or 800. But you wouldn't have to take two vehicles to a junior high basketball game or a bus that's going to cost you about three who knows what, depending on diesel prices per mile. That's going to be, I mean, possible savings there.
And this, so this would replace the van?
This would, we, instead of replacing that one van that we sold on the auction, we would replace it with this instead of this and another one.
And then we have another, off vehicles with, I assume that's not being drove every day and, I mean, it wouldn't be taken to the colony?
No, it wouldn't be able to be taken to the colony, no. You know, with the light that I've got brought to me, I mean, if we have to run one to Mitchell, we didn't have that in the consideration of as far as vehicle space. But I don't know if all the vehicles are going to be going to the colony as much as they were last year. We gotta, we gotta coordinate that a little bit better, because there was a lot of them at times going out there. But.
There would have been some restructuring there.
Yeah.
Allow us to.
Really, that van that got... The van that we got rid of, all that really did last year was every once in a while, it went to the colony, but it wasn't a daily. Pretty sure that did not go to the colony daily, that old silver one. That was just the one that got used to pick up the kids to get them to school. There was a couple of kids that we had to transport to school in the morning and then transport them home, because they couldn't ride on the bus. So that got used for that. We would probably just use one of the black vans for that, and maybe those colony people would have to be home a little sooner and leave a little later to get out there. I mean, we'll have to see, because we're getting that kid to school, so it's here by 8:15. Then they can take off with it. So I don't see the need of another one right now.
PJ Bussin, what does that do with their contract with this?
Oh, it's in our contract that we can have something 15-passenger or less, because remember, we used to have a minibus that was ours. We paid the driver for that. It's been a long time. You're the only one probably remembers that. I barely remember it. But that was our bus. That was not PJ's school buses.
I did look in the contract. It stipulates that it's still a viable option. And you think 15 and less, we have the ability to do that without violating the contract.
Yep.
Okay.
So you, I mean, what we're doing is basically asking your blessing to go ahead and take a look at, knowing that it wasn't in the budget, but we...
Financially, you have the resources.
Financially, we have...
The $30,000 we budgeted for?
The $30,000 budgeted plus the $30,000 for the hail damage, plus the $16,000 from the sale of the, well, $6,000 from the sale of the other vehicle.
Well, there's been $30,000 in the budget the last two years that we haven't...
That we haven't used. I mean, it's been a while since we bought the blue one.
Is this diesel, I assume?
No, I don't think they are. They're gas. It's a Ford Transit, I think, is what they're called. I'm assuming that's, he did not? Tell me what brand it was.
If it's a 2019, I suspect it's even E-Connell. So you could put 85 in it if you needed to.
But you know how those vehicle sales were. I mean, if we do it at the beginning of August, I mean, I'm sure JR would let us write the check in September board meeting and give it to him. I just wanted you guys to be aware. I think we'd give more use of it than what people think, so.
So bottom line, you think there'd be a lot of use?
The FFA is excited about using it, because cheerleading was one of the big components right away, but now they might have too many to use it. But they also had too many almost to use for two vehicles of what we have. So then you would have had to take a bus. So now maybe we could take this and another van instead of a bus, where two vans wouldn't have done it before, with them now this year for competitive cheer. Competitive cheer, not signing my...
All of our club, Aspen, not our club, but our student-led organizations and stuff going to a few competitions here and there, different other things, golf, I mean, you'd be...
Golf would use it every golf meet there.
We'll be shocked as to how much it's actually gone, in my opinion.
Because the golf, the golf clubs don't fit in the current vans that we have very well. So they've been wanting this or a trailer for a while, too.
We invested in one, and it was gone all the time for exactly most things, so.
So you need a motion?
Do we need a motion right now, or would that just be the...
If we have your blessing to pursue it, I think the motion would come back to me. Here it is, boom, boom, and then you make the expenditure at that time, and you approve the expenditure, unless you want to do it. It doesn't matter if we do it either way. If you want to make a motion to...
Just make a motion. That way you have your blessing, and you can do what you need to do, and then we can approve it later when that... So moved.
Second.
Moved by Neeble and second by Turgur to proceed. Proceed with the 15-passenger van.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Both same side? Motion carried.
All right. We will move to number 10, action items. Action item A is approved July financial report. The school board will review the July financial report for discussion and approval.
That would be this document.
One question I had on some of the bills we did this month were to ACE, or not ACE, Inc., R. Inc. That was just their fee for everything.
So far. This is, Craig knows this 100 times better than I do, but the rationale why we're having it as an action item was our conversation last month of making it noted that you guys are spending some time on this concept, so. I'll turn it over to Craig, because those are his numbers. It's not that I don't know, but he can better explain it than I can, so.
For Scott, you know, you haven't really, probably had a whole lot of, I don't know, maybe Mr. M talked to you a little bit about this, but the different funds there.
We did, but I'm not sure.
Only certain expenditures can...
I wrote down in my other packet.
Only certain expenditures can come out of certain funds.
Great.
So that's why we got to show you the balances and stuff at each board meeting with this sheet here. Some different things that I wanted to point out on this is, you know, your general fund that will, you know, with the annual report, if you look at where it says ending balance, about almost two-thirds the way down, it says 1.548 there. And then you go down below prior year's data, those four years' worth of history. If you look, it's a little shorter or a little less. So our fund balance will go down a little bit this year, okay? And that's after transferring the 275. But we had some, there were some things in there that caused that to happen. We'll see if it goes down like that again. I don't know. But I just wanted to point that out.
What's our enrollment look like?
The enrollment's up, so as of now.
We're open to be 20 a year.
So that will help those, that's about the difference. I mean, that'll help tremendously. But the Capella one, the next one, you know, we were talking about that van, 1.1, and that's after making, there's still a reimbursement that gets to be added back to that of $178,000 that I haven't claimed yet through the Esser funds for the HVAC from the bill that you approved July 11th to pay ACE Engineering 100, or no, Paulson She-Metal for $178,000 for their purchases of all the equipment and stuff so far. The Fisher, that bill is actually, yeah, that's not come out of here yet, but that one will might get refunded, because that is not...
That's our own money.
That's our own money, yes. But I'm just saying, that's a pretty healthy balance in the Capella.
We haven't gotten all the Esser funds, right, Craig?
No, that was the 178 that I was talking about. And some of the Esser funds need to be added to the general fund as well yet a little bit, too.
Right.
Yes. Not all of them are in there. Special education, I mean, even there, we have a pretty decent balance in there according to Mr. M. But we'll have a few more, we lost in expenditure, we have a few more aid expenditures coming out of there probably, or one or so, maybe a possibility of another. Bond redemption, of course, that's our QZAP bonds there. That's the money we've put aside so far. We've got to show that on our books every month. It's still your money. It's just sitting in the First Bank of Phillip until, for another two and a half years.
Till you make your payments.
Yeah, we make our payments there. It's still your money. It still sits in there, still on our balance sheets. School lunch program, so that one I wanted to bring up, because we're going to talk about school lunch prices in a little bit. If you look at that balance, $167,000, that's a good balance in there as well. And not very many schools operate in the positive, and we're one of a handful.
Yeah, we were negative for a lot of years, Craig.
Yep. I mean, it's been, in my timeframe, I think we supplemented one time of $25,000 in that one year, quite a while ago, and ever since then, we've been pretty good. So those ladies down there do a wonderful job, which brings me to the deal of, you are going to be looking for a head cook in the future here, because she is indicated that's probably looking at retiring. So what we might look at doing with the balance that we have is maybe bringing somebody on to teach them. If it's somebody that, if we don't have anybody on staff that wants to do it, which all indications show no, so far, no one wants to take that on. But we'll either look to bring somebody in early, so Judy can train her. If she doesn't have experience, if they have it, if we can find somebody with experience, then maybe we wouldn't, but we have the balance there to pay them this year if we do do that. Technically, you're supposed to have one or three months' worth of operating expenditures as a balance, as a positive balance, and we're probably closer to six months operating expenditures. Now, there are some waivers out there for this year because of COVID, because of the federal government giving us the $4 in some sense reimbursement. Next year, it's not going to be that. It's only, it's going to be about $380 something. I don't know the exact cents off the top of my head, but it was 40 cents more than what it was prior to COVID, and prior was 341, I think, was the number. So 40-some cents higher than that is what we'll give for meals, for any free meal reimbursement from the federal government. And then you get a certain percentage for reduced meals, and then a certain percentage for paid meals as well. So whatever you set for the price for the paid meals, you also are going to get a federal reimbursement rate from the government for those meals as well. It's not very high, but it's 40 cents, 30-some cents, I can't remember. I don't know what that one's going to be. I just heard 40 cents higher, and I don't know if that's at each level or not for sure.
So have you got a number figured out that we should get to by the end of the upcoming school year that we should be down to? So, because otherwise, we have to, what, give it back?
Well, no, there's waivers you can apply for.
Okay. So we don't have to worry about...
As long as you have a plan. And our plans, it could be, you know, prior to, we did Free Lunch Fridays. Some people have asked about, well, what about free breakfasts? We did the Free Lunch Fridays prior, because we felt that captured everybody. Not everybody can make it to school early to give breakfast. Or if you do a free day, where nobody has to pay for the meals that day, everybody's here. Or for the most part, everyone's here. It's more people than if it's more. That was one of the reasons why we did that in the past. You know, and when we did that in the past, it was like 14, 15 Fridays. That means we don't get the reimbursements for those either, because we cannot submit them to the federal government for reimbursement, because they're not a reimbursable meal, because they weren't paid for.
It was like half of the school year.
So it was, yeah.
So have you factored in the price of groceries these days?
Well, that's going to eat up some of that balance probably, too. But that 40 cents reimbursement rate is the reason I think they're giving that, is because of the costs of food prices.
Gotcha. And that's a combination, because Judy does a really nice job of, from a commodities perspective, and utilizing the product that essentially is given to you from a commodity perspective. So not everything that you were feeding has that price point, the grocery increase in it, because it's coming through USDA in that concept. So, I mean, one would think that we're not paying for everything because of USDA.
So the enterprise fund, that's already negative because of the transferred money there, but then you made payments for payroll in July that, we just made it zero, made it hopefully zero out if I did my math right. So now that one's going to start going negative until we start getting some money in for the preschool payments, that the parents are charged each month for that. But that's going to end up negative, and we've got that budgeted in the general fund, a line item for that. But you'll see that one negative most of the year, okay? Don't worry about that. There's two things in that enterprise fund. It's preschool and driver's ed, okay? So those are the only two things that are in there. Then the trusted agency, that's all the FFA, FCCLA, all those group organizations, their money that we're just custodians for, we're overseers, write the check.
Are they still reporting to you, Craig?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, they have to fill out bank vouchers, and are you talking the sports ones or the, because these do not include the sports ones that we had the issue with before. They are still reporting to Mr. Fisher. He gets, I get the deals, the bank statements from the bank. Each month, I give them to him before they even see, or each individual coaching group sees them. And he initials them, and if he has any questions, he asks about them. Yep, that's still happening.
The class ones?
The class ones are all through me, yes. So we get the deposits, Julie receipts it, puts in, fills out the deposit, I take down to the bank. The checks got to be, or the vouchers have to be signature by the advisor, signature by the student, and then the principal, and then me. So, yeah, there's four signatures on each one of those. Then the scholarship funds. The reason why that balance is big is the last two years, which I just got another one in the mail since this, Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. There is a person over there that has mailed us two checks, and the next one is bigger than the first one was. And so, I mean, we're not a scow, I don't, the only thing we really use this for, I would like to take all that and just give it to the foundation, because her stipulation in the letter, Mr. Acre, he's not here tonight to talk about it, but was to give to them if they're going to proceed in a post-secondary. There's no, like, it has to be a medical-related, it has to be educational-related. There's none of that. So why couldn't that go to the, what is it, the area foundation that does the senior scholarships? And it would add, the last year's check was $6,000 and some, and this year's was bigger. That's not included in here yet. So I'm thinking that's going to just write that. I got to talk to Mr. Acre. He was supposed to be working with them to make sure that was okay, because that's fulfilling her. We just don't take care of the scholarships right here. The only reason we have this is, I really, anymore, it's one in and one out. They give me a check, and I write it back out. Used to be, we had Pioneer Seed would do one, Coca-Cola would do one. We had, there was some, a couple of the little ones.
Some memorials, maybe, scholarships.
We don't have any of those anymore.
No, I don't like that.
And so...
Where it comes from.
I would like that, it needs to go to them, because that goes to the seniors. So just so you know, that balance will probably go down with Mr. Acre, and I get through that with the Sioux Falls Community Foundation over there. Any other questions on this? Won't be that in-depth the next few times, but just wanted to go through some, Scott has had a whole lot of experience with this, so if you have any questions, don't call me and ask, okay? But the top is, you know, the receipts, disbursements, is the checks written out, and the payrolls, and then balances. Investing is listed there, how much in each fund is invested at the bank here. There is a possibility of, you know, the interest rates are starting to go up a little bit, but South Dakota FIT is a place that I talked to during my business manager's state conference, and Mr. M talked to him at his deal out here. They're about three times higher than the local bank right now. So I don't know if we'll look into that or not, and see how easy or how much of a headache that is for that.
A little better return on your money.
Yeah. Last thing I have is, this is just for information tonight. I would like to look into this. Pass those two down, Scott. I gave you one right this...
Yep, I got one.
The P Card program, and this is through the associate school boards. So ASPSD, and it's, they group this through, or it actually runs out of the Illinois Association of School Business Officials. So what this is, basically, P Card's a credit card. And you can break it down and do a lot of things with it, meaning I can make a, give the custodians a P Card that has $1,500 for the year. You could do each teacher, I mean, Brookings School District, which we'll get to, you'll see them, they use it a lot, and they get a return. So it's just like your credit card. You have a number of days you have to pay it back. The less days you pick, the higher your return and so forth. But it's basically a credit card to use to pay the bills, and then turn around and pay one vendor rather than 25 vendors. And then you get a percentage back, just like your cash back bonus on TV of every credit card that they have anymore. So... So if you, that second page there kind of gives you the overall what South Dakota spent in the schools that are deal there, that first box, the little table, and then the total program, meaning the bank that issues these cards to you is the Bank of Montreal. Is through, is who the Illinois Association of School Business Officials, who's the parent group. Everybody goes through them, and then Illinois disperses the reimbursements back out that they get from the Bank of Montreal. So that middle box is what the total spent for all the different states that are in with them. You know, almost five hundred million dollars. So then this third one is here, I told you about tiered. You know, if you do a seven-day, meaning when your statement is due, you got seven days to pay the bill, you'll get one point five eight percent back. But, you know, for us, that's not. Something might not be feasible, we might have to go a little longer. You got to set your days up just right to match your board meetings up, to make sure they get the check in time, so you don't get delayed pay. And that's all what those days are, so as you see, the twenty-seven days, only one point two-three percent back of whatever you spent on it. Not everything is going to be able to be paid with it, because, you know, it doesn't make any sense to, if you're going to get charged a three percent fee to pay the bill, and you only get one point two back, that doesn't make a lot of sense. So it'd only be the things that would accept it without the fees.
What would we envision it for, Craig, to utilize it?
Well, we do more and more things online, we use our credit card more and more now. I had to buy.
Amazon purchases per se?
Um, Amazon, we have a line of credit with them now currently. So I don't know if we would do that for sure. But for instance, you know, Mrs. Kafka put, I don't even know how many thousands of dollars on her deal for airline tickets for her national FCCLA, which she's got to give me the pink voucher for now, because she's got to turn that in to get her money back to pay the bill, because we, I don't even know if we had enough spending limit on our credit card to do it. Now, those types of things, purchasing supplies online.
Are there limits on this concept?
Um, there is, but as you can see, when you look, if you keep scrolling back, page, let's see. They never said, I suppose you could set it at whatever you wanted it to be. There's the twenty, the page, what is it, five, shows you the schools that are members. There's those rate tiers again. So overall spending, you know, five hundred million, that's why we got those rates, the one point five, one point four. So as the Illinois ASBO group gets bigger, if you get up to the five hundred million, your rates go up a little bit higher. So it's all based on total expenditures as the whole in there. And then the next pages after that are kind of what area schools, or the schools in South Dakota that are using it, what they spent in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one, an increase or decrease. And if you look down to the Brookings one, where's Brookings at?
Five.
Five, yeah, they've spent almost two thousand, or two million dollars on their P Card, because they give each teacher, they don't buy supplies for them. They give them a card with a dollar amount. That's what they have to spend. And it's preloaded, it's like a preloaded deal, they can't go over. He has over two hundred cards in the Brookings School District, that's not what I want to do. Because I don't want to manage, we'd have to hire another person to manage the two hundred cards, so no. But, you know, look at their return, they got a, if you go back to the next page, the rebates, Brookings, they got almost thirty thousand dollars in rebates. That's half of an employee. And anything we can do to try to gain more revenue is the reason why I'm talking about during the financial report for you to look at and think about, if you want to, me to look into this further.
I assume all purchases still would have to be logged and recorded.
Oh, yeah, yep. And there's a way in the accounting software that you, you do your invoice batch, they call it P Card, and then inside that, you do all of the individual companies as well, so you can still have the history tracking of where you purchased stuff from. It doesn't all just say P Card. But when you go to write the check, it just writes one check instead of fifty checks. And mailing, you know, it's going to save a little bit each month, just postage as well, and checks and.
All your report on papers here in your financial review.
That wouldn't change.
That wouldn't change, it's still going to publish that, so you know where it's going.
Yeah, because you.
It's just helping you with one check.
Yeah.
All those checks.
And that's why I suggest the twenty-seven day with the board meetings going once a month and all that. So, and I don't know, there's the grace period day, so you can see the schools that do do, you know, Brookings does do the seven days, so they get the highest rebate. I'd have to talk to them, see how, I mean, they got to obviously set their date up at a, the statement ends this day, and seven days after the board meeting, I mean.
Are their staff turning these in on their own on a computer program online or something, or?
You mean as far as the ones that have the cards themselves?
Yeah, like, are they putting the receipts in and like reconciling them, and then you can see that they're reconciled, or?
Like I said, I want one card just to make purchase, I don't want to do every person has a card, no. That's not what I'm looking at. I'm just telling you, it has that functionality to do if you want it to.
That's not the plan to do.
That's not the plan to do, no.
Okay.
I'm just looking at, we're spending three hundred seventy thousand dollars a month in supply, just regular checks. How much of that can we get at least one point two percent back on?
Do you want any answer today, or?
No, no, I just, I mean, is it okay for me to do some more research on it? Because right now, when I did do the credit card, you guys put a limit on it. So that's, that's the one reason why.
And this, that's grace period here, so you get your statements through, say, Montana, and then they give you a due date, it's grace period, that Montana's passed the due date?
No, I think that's how many, from the date, the end of the statement.
End of the statement.
Yeah. Because that's all based on that tier of rebates percentages. I assumed, I didn't, like I said, I didn't do a whole lot, I talked to Holly one time on this. Who's, Holly's the ASBSD, our head honcho up there, so.
Okay, do we need to have a motion to approve that financial?
Oh, yes, we do for this.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the July financial report?
Move by Leshon, seconded by Pearl, any other discussion? Hearing none, no in favor, say aye. Close same side, motion carried.
All right, action item B is set school lunch prices. The school board will discuss setting the lunch prices for paid, free, and reduced lunches.
Okay, so we, I got the information that we needed, really, the only thing that we needed to worry about was the adult meals, because state tells us what we, what the maximum or minimum can be, at least on that. And that was four eighty-five for adults, and for adult meals at two sixty. But we just leave the adult breakfast alone at two sixty, because that met the requirement. Otherwise, I recommend you leaving all other lunch prices the same, meaning breakfast would be thirty cents for a reduced person, and two dollars for a pre-K through five, and two dollars for six through twelve, along with two sixty for the adult breakfast. And the milk would be forty cents still. And then at lunchtime, milk's still forty cents. Reduced price is forty cents, and that's set by the federal government. And then our preschool through fifth grade, because since we changed to have the sixth graders down there, we're going to include them in the in the middle school pricing now. Preschool through fifth grade would be two eighty-five is what it was before, no change. And then six through twelve at three oh five, which is no change.
And that's what we were two years ago prior to.
Yes.
Because you've been free meals.
Yep. Now, yes, there's cost of food, John, but there's a clause, when we have a balance like this, and we've been doing as well as we have, there, the maximum they can make you go up in a year is ten cents. So if we were to increase it now, then that maximum is all based on what your current price is from the federal reimbursement rate. So we're going to have to go up, because they just bumped the forty cents less they changed what that was. But since we're in the positive, it's kind of a reset year, and we might as well leave it alone and go forward. Will we have to go up a dime next year? We very well could, just because of the difference between the federal reimbursement rate and our current prices. But the most.
Back in charge of this is the big balance that we had, more than anything.
Yep.
So keeping it low is fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, need a motion to approve the prices. I'll second it.
I didn't, additional on trace seconds are still a dollar twenty-five, and the adult meals would be four eighty-five for teachers now instead of four dollars. Just so you know.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, Jill, you made the motion right and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, no in favor, say aye. Close same side, motion carried.
All right, action item C is approve final handbook changes, the school board will approve the final changes to handbook. Just need a motion to approve the changes that were made.
Move by Leshon, seconded by Turinger, any other discussion? Hearing none, no in favor, say aye. Close same side, motion carried.
All right, action item D is safe return to school plan. The school board will review the safe return to school plan, committee recommendation for COVID mitigation strategies and protocol.
So I put the safe return in your packet. This was a byproduct in July, we had a conversation about where we wanted to go. The suggestion was to get the committee back together, we got the committee together on July twenty-seventh. We went through the entirety of the plan, and what you have in front of you is a byproduct of that conversation. In a nutshell, for summation purposes, is the conversation centered around close contact strategies. And at the committee's conversation and their recommendation is at this stage that close contact tracing mitigation strategies will be suspended to the start of the school year. However, district, obviously, the caveat reserves the right to reinstate any of those strategies as the virus necessitates. That is a common theme throughout the safe return to school plan. And only from the standpoint that if you don't put it in verbiage, if something has to happen, that we don't have to sit here and come back, you know, every two weeks or whatever, and somebody say, well, it wasn't in your plan, it wasn't in your plan, you can't do that, it wasn't in your plan. This gives the administration and the school board the authority to say, hey, this is what we're going to do at this stage of the game. So there are several components, I know several, but there's pieces of this plan that have been, I guess, obviously not eliminated, but suspended. What we are going to do for your knowledge or for your understanding is that, I talked to Tony, we're going to leave last year's plan on our school website, and then we're going to add this year's plan, so there's two different links there. So if people really want to sit there and compare the difference between the two, they can go back and look at either plan. The protocols for those that are have a positive or have been infected with the COVID virus, those stay the same. The strategies are going different, we're in the plan at the end of spring last year. You know, the five days, if that's the way we want to go. There's still the recommendation to do all ten, I mean, then that's one of our options. If people want to take all ten days, you know, from a school attendance perspective, they can. But we can't say five, and five days out, and five days with a mask upon your return if you have that positive result. But close contacts, tracing, mitigation strategies, we will still inform every parent, let's say, give for an example, that Mr. Fisher has a first grader in one of the sections. The parents inform us that that person, that little guy tested positive, or a gal. We will take the initiative to send out to those parents and inform them, hey, just be aware there was a positive in your classroom, we'll give them the dates, much information as we can, but that's as far as we're going. We are no longer going to, at this stage of the game, at least to start the school with, have that close contact strategy chasing concept in place. For personal reference, and I talked to the committee about this, but so you're aware, we had about five hundred ninety-four people within the facility at any one given time. If everybody was here, between students, staff, everybody included, about five hundred ninety-four. We had ninety-one student and staff positive cases last year that we had identified, or we were told up with the help of parents, or the state at that time, very few from the state. Maybe about four, the rest of them were on our own case type of deal. And that was about a fifteen percent positivity rate. I don't know that that was on the line, I think if anybody really tracks this in school districts, I don't know, but I talked to a few other people, and I don't know that we were above or beyond, you know, with anybody else in that realm. But the, the close contact mitigation strategy concept where somebody had that, and then we took the protocol of putting that section, especially at the elementary level, because of the, due to the nature of an elementary classroom, we put the whole class in. That happened fifteen times last year, within the course of the school year. And we had one section of fifth grade that got tagged three times in that notion. So they were in masks because of that protocol that we had in place. So there were several that had it twice, you know, protocol. But through their conversation, and I feel that they represented their peers, we did have healthcare involved in that process, we had a parent involved in that process, and it seems to be the consensus that, you know, close contact tracing, the necessity for it, I think, you know, that was kind of the suggestion that preempted that whole conversation, is to get back to them, the necessity of doing that. So this is our, the board, or excuse me, the committee's recommendation to you. I'm not going to sit here and read this thing verbatim, page for page, if there's certain questions that you had, comments that you want to make, you want us to go back and fix something. It is my plan to expose the staff to this on Monday. And then even today, or if you give this the blessing, we will get it out on the website, and we will push it out to our public, so they know what the plan is going into the school year. So comments, questions about what was in the packet.
The only difference I saw was the close contact, so everything else remained the same?
It's unsure.
Okay.
I maybe took a little liberty, and we tweaked some of the verbiage in as far as the actual, I guess, end result, but the intent is essentially the same.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So we still going to have a nurse here?
We do have the nurse, they will be here for, I hope we can.
Eight to one.
Yeah, five hours, yeah, for, we held that, we had to reduce that time in order to stay in line from the budget perspective on that cost component of it, because they did open that cost. So that's what we gave, the compromise that we found in that, so. But they are certainly operating under the concept that even still their hours are up, if we needed something, all we have to do is make a phone call, and they would be here in a very short period of time, so. And Rita left with that, with a conversation with her, I've talked with Lindsay, and she's very adamant about that as well, as well as the nurses that work here at school, so.
All right, I see a motion to approve the changes to the safe return to school plan.
Second. Move by Leshon, seconded by Sean Felder, to approve the safe return to school plan as presented to the board, any other discussion? Hearing none, no in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same side.
All right, we will take a short recess.
Two things in it.
Oh, you got something else?
No, I mean, exactly.
Oh, okay. We'll take a short recess, and then we'll go into executive session.